Hello, hello, everybody. Welcome to a special Saturday night session where I'm just jumping back on to finish my donations. I didn't complete in the earlier evening session and the free readings for my YouTube monthly channel members. I didn't get to any of the other free readings this evening or this morning. So those of you who are trying to get a free reading, please come back tomorrow and Sunday. I do have a special session where our special thing that I do on Sundays where I'm on for two hours. Whatever I don't complete after I go spend an hour with my praying mantis members and eat, I'll come back on and finish out all readings. So you definitely will get a message from spirit tomorrow if you put a free reading request in the chat. So thank you for your patience in doing that. I wish I could stay on to complete all free readings all the time, but I have to balance and self-care. It's a big challenge of mine in life to do that. So I appreciate you understanding. There's no chat in this one. I'm not taking any new requests. I'm just completing those ones from earlier. The order is going to be, I've got two donations. So I've got Happy Pill will be up first, and you also had a free reading, which I'm going to tag on to the end of this. So you don't have to go try to find it. So you'll have your donation and then your free reading. And then Supernova, you'll be up for yours. So thank you for that donation. And then I'll move into, I have three YouTube channel members for their free readings. Nellia Mederos, Faith and Love, and then Moonlight for those free ones. So we'll do those here momentarily. I think that's everything. If you are interested in having your readings prioritized during sessions and included in these when I come back, you can become a YouTube channel member, $2.99 a month for the Zen Cricket, $7.99 a month for the praying mantis. In addition to getting prioritization and you are guaranteed that I will complete your reading sometime during the day. You can do that. There's a link down in the description box for that. Plus get advanced access to all the videos I put out. And then also Wednesdays, we have a special session for both members together. Thursdays have a special session in the evening for praying mantis members. And then Friday and Saturday night and Sunday afternoon, after those sessions, we have an hour together. So if you're interested, check it out. Also, I do personal readings. If you want to even dive even deeper, and there's a link for those in the description box down below as well. All right. So Happy Pill, you are up first. Thank you for your donation. So you want to know Spirit Guides messages on your past life? All right, let's take a look here and see what they want you to know about one of your past lives. So let's take a look here. Okay, so I feel like this is who you were. And then this is what they want you to know about it. Okay, they do want those two. And but they want this one here. Okay, evidently those two as well. Okay, I like it. All right, so who were you? Wow. And you, of course, you get a knight, a knight of angels, which is the knight of swords in the standard tarot, but you were a watcher. So this is interesting. One of your past lives, you were in a noble type of role, like a knight. And so it was more of a warrior type of energy that you experienced back then, masculine energy. That's there. So in that lifetime, you happened to be that. And we'll look at your journey here. The rest of these cards are your journey in this past lifetime. And and we'll understand, we'll glean some information from here because they always bring through the past life that can aid us in our current lifetime and all of our lifetimes that we live, present, past, future. They're all really happening at the same time outside of space and time. So we're all helping each other in all these different forms of human characters. That just blows my mind. I can't even kind of grasp it, but just know that this particular is from the past. And I'm feeling Asian area because I'm seeing you in the helmet and then the bamboo type of vest on top of like Shogun, almost, you know, not a Shogun, but a samurai, I guess samurai Shogun type of outfit on a horse. And so I do sense that type of energy. That's where you came from here. So let's let's dive into what your your experience was there. So you had the page of hearts. So you definitely were a passionate person. You you weren't like this warrior that was, you know, raw and heartless or whatever. You were a very compassionate warrior and and you became a warrior. Oh, wow. Yeah, because I feel like you lost like your parents when you were younger and your family. You're the only one who survived an attack. And so a big piece of why you wanted, you wanted to protect people because of the pain that you had experienced when you were a child. And so because you were an orphan, you actually found like the military camp and you you told them, I want to be a warrior like you. And so they allowed you to, you know, be the servant boy for a while in this lifetime of, you know, doing the work, doing the hard work and labor and doing all that stuff. But they also allowed you to watch and and some, eventually when you were big enough. Because I feel like that kind of happened to you, like when you're like nine or 10 years old. But as you got older, became like a early teenager, they started, you know, practicing with you and you became really good. But you had a heart for helping people because of all that. Yeah, and you had the star, very, very, you know, Aquarian energy, wanting to change the world, wanting to make it a place different. And you had a dream of what you wanted to become and and you did. You you really gave everything. You lived, you know, such a brave life of trying to be this. And nothing held you back. You really moved forward with that. Yeah. Chariot movement, again, you know, this wonderful, they had two horses there. So I do feel like you made it up into the the ranks of the military and whatever Asian culture or country or whatever it was, empire that it was, you were in a significant role within it with this chariot. So you really put your your heart and everything into this and and you made those, you made that successful duration there. Looks like here you also, I feel like you were heavily wounded because you had the strength card. And to regain your strength, you did go to a monastery to be helped. And because they did Reiki and they did acupuncture and like Chinese medicine, the medicine of the East. And so you were wounded, but you did go to a monastery for a while. And I love it because there you found a different spiritual belief that just helped you on your path that was there. So you started off very, you kind of had some anger and all that, even though you had a huge heart and compassion, because you really wanted to have revenge on the the people that came and invaded and and killed your family. But you found serenity and forgiveness and release at this monastery. And it helped you realize that there was more to life and I just feel it really changed you. Yeah. Yeah, the two of hearts. So you did find love after that. I feel like before you were all about revenge and the military and that was everything. And you were like, I don't have time for all that. But at that monastery, as you were on this retreat, I feel like there's like this monastery up, it wasn't like up in the mountains, but it was up on the hills kind of away from. There was like this little city down below it that was around it. And you started, and when you were feeling better, you started making trips down into there. And that's where you met someone and fell in love. I love that. Yeah. And you do, you eight of, the eight of pentacles here really is this wonderful journey of growth and learning. And I, oh, I feel like it's interesting because you like this guardianship, you know, with this nine of angels. You liked protecting people and helping people that I feel like because of your wounds, even though you healed and you were better, you couldn't, like you weren't like, I don't want to go to battle anymore. I'm like, you were, you know, able to function, but you really couldn't battle. And so you transformed and you went, I like this, eight of pentacles, because it's you went to medical school, Chinese medical school there, and you changed into being a doctor to help people instead. So what a wonderful adventure and journey. Hopefully then something of that resonates with there. But it's all about not being afraid of changing paths, of release and forgiveness of some old pains and put in your mind to what you're wanting to do and you could always do it. Because who would have changed from being like a general in a military to, I'm going to become a doctor now. And they blessed the king, you know, whatever emperor of the region that you're under blessed and said, yeah, you've you've given so much because you were so successful. And you trained up some great people underneath you that they were like, yeah. And you, I mean, learning Chinese medicine, you just applied yourself like you did learning how to become a warrior. And you became a healer instead of someone who inflicted wounds. Wow, I love that for you. So that's what they have for that one for you, for your donation. And then for your free reading, a spiritual reading. So let's take a look here. Of course, free readings are just one to two cards. So we'll grab that real quick here for you. So what does they want you to know here? Yeah. You have the seven of trees, the seven of pentacles, and the ten of pentacles, which is abundance and fullness of life. There is this seven of trees energy is like when you start to see the fruits of things in life. And I feel like they're the the spiritual reading that they're wanting to tell you is that, you know, don't be afraid that if there's something that you've been pursuing that you're ready, you can go a different direction. Your all, whatever is meant for you, for your fate, will never pass you by. But sometimes we'll we'll head off in a direction, we'll follow our heart and then we'll get the fruit. And we're like, okay, that's enough of that. Now I'm ready to go in a different direction. My heart's leading me this way. So follow your heart. I mean, literally, your heart is here. Follow it and it leads you to success. The ten of pentacles, it leads you to this fullness of life. And I mean, the ten of pentacles, whatever fullness of life means, you know, abundance, love, family, the dog, you know, ancestry, you know, everything there. It's like, okay, it brings you to that place. So don't be afraid to alter course. It's kind of like both of your readings are intertwined here. But they're they're definitely saying, don't be, don't be afraid to follow your heart. And that, you know, the stuff that, okay, that's, that was good, but not anymore for me. Right? So that's what they have for your free reading there. Happy pill. So many blessings to you. And then Supernova, thank you so much for your additional donation and your multiple donations tonight. Anyone want to know what interesting, cool message from Spirit Guides want you to know? Spiritual posse, let's take a look here. I feel like we are going over here. Yeah, they do want to go over here to the wisdom of the house of night. All right, since you're all up all hours of the night, right? Let's take a look here. So what cool message do they have here for you? Oh, no. Well, they got denial. It's not, it is not a river in Egypt. But I like this card 14, reaching for the grapes. I think those are grapes. Yeah. Like their little cool tattoo on here. So number 14. Interesting. It says, not everything is always in reach, my child. Sometimes I must create distance between what you want and when or how you're meant to receive it. Consider the wait for your highest good. You're not meant to achieve what you want right now. Keep the faith, for if you wait and show patience, I will reveal some wondrous things later. So gentle warning not to get caught up in your desire to reach your goal too soon. You may choose sour fruit that only looks ripe and juicy. In this case, I alone know when the time is right. Patience, my child. So living your dream and heading forward, there are some things that they're wanting you to just kind of look at before you head into that. So I like that and just like, don't beat yourself up about, oh, I should be here. I needed to be there. I need to get to that. Just enjoy the journey and everything you're going through now is part of that. Just know that before you kind of go outward, there's some physical health, emotional health, mental health that you're doing so that you'll enjoy it instead of destroy it. Right? I feel like they also want to give you one of these wisdom of the hidden realm oracle here. Because they were saying, that wasn't too cool, but that wasn't necessary. They wanted to make sure it was short and sweet. But they want to give you a cool, a cool perspective here. Okay. And I love this, the back of the card here. And oh, you got the, oh, I love it. So you got the sun dancers. See if I can show it here for you. And it says joyful activities, celebration of life and abundance. This is card 32. That's, this seems more super cool. So the sun dancers are your allies. And as your allies, the sun dancers celebrate you now and remind you of the laws of success and praise. Anything you place your attention on will manifest an experience. So the laws are always perfect. Expect the best and praise it in advance. This unleashes the magic of mystical magnetic energy, drawing circumstances to you to create the reality you envision. That's why they told you, but just wait, you're going to have this, but just know this. Give things in advance for the grace and goodwill of the divine. Be willing to dance the victory dance as if your greatest dreams are realized and watch how easily things begin to fall into place. Stay positive and leave the timing up to the divine. All things are possible now. Dance the joy of being and celebrate your life in abundance today. That focusing on a higher vibration and gratitude. Now the challenger, let me see. I think that's all there is on here. Yeah. I do want to read the challenger side because that can bring us some good information too. Says beware of losing yourself in your dreams of the future when the sun dancers come to challenge you. Their message is sweet and simple. Stop what you're doing and go have some fun. Celebrate what is and don't worry about what will be or what could be. Be here and now. Just be, just for today. You will find your answers, but only after you've made time to play. Tomorrow, after all, is another day and the sun will rise again to shed its warmth and light on all that needs clarity. You can count on it. I love that. So the sun dancers, more of your support team. But they give you a lot of that, you know, when you're ready for this focus, some great guidance on how you can achieve that, moving towards your dream. So I love that for you. That's what they have for you, Supernova. So thank you again for your donation. Many blessings to you. All right. So that was it for the donations now. I just have three of the YouTube channel members. And again, these are just one to two cards. So these will go a little faster than those others. So Nellia, you are up. So thank you for your donations earlier. And your free reading was what do your coworkers and Lemay, I probably murdered their name, think of you and your work? All right, let's take a look here. Of course, everyone has a different perception because everyone's seen you from a different perspective through their own eyes. So I will pull a card for your coworkers as a collective and like the average of what they're seeing. And then one specifically, since you mentioned L's name there, we'll pull a specific one for them. So collective overall thinking from everyone? No? Okay, it's this one. Okay, and this is L. All right, let's take a look here. So of you and your work. So you're overall, well, yeah. So overall, they they know that you're, there's so much more to you than meets the eye. There's a lot of your coworkers perception of you. They're like, there's so much more. They recognize that you have like this intuition and that you know things too. Because they they feel like for your work, you just kind of intuitively know things. And they're like, how did you know to do it that way? I just know. I just have this little, you know, and they know and they can sense that from you. But they also know that there's so much more to you. And I feel like you know things when you're not supposed to know things and you feel people's emotions. And you're like, how are you today? And they're like, I'm finding like, really? How are you? And they're like, I'm not doing well. And they're like, yeah, how'd you know? You know? So I feel like you kind of have that kind of divine feminine energy and that 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 kind of emanates and radiates from you. That's interesting. And then L, what do they think of you and your work? So with the eight of hearts here, the eight of cups. I don't know, they, L, you know, I feel like with this, because this is about walking away from emotions that don't serve you anymore. I I feel like they have this, the big energy that's coming is like, I don't think you're going to be here anymore. I think you're leaving. I think they have this weird feeling, this gut feeling that you're leaving. They just like, are you going somewhere? You know, and this is what they feel. And I feel like that kind of overrides everything because I feel like they think that you're not going to be there much longer. That you're looking to expand your horizons and and head into something else. And this kind of energy of, I don't know, I don't know if they're like you're someone you get along with or not or not. But I almost have this energy underneath the surface that are going like, take me with you. Don't leave me here with them. That's funny. But so those are kind of the general energies that are there. You know, I don't feel like there's a, I didn't get like, you know, because that's overall. I mean, if you want to know a specific people, we can tap into them. But you know, just knowing that everyone perceives you through their own eyes and you perceive everyone through your own filters. So a big thing that you can do is wonder, how do I feel about them? How is that mirroring something I feel about myself, both in positive things and lower vibrational things too, can help with that. So that's what they have for you, Nellia. So many blessings to you. And then faith and love, you are up next. So are there any changes coming to your love life by the end of February? So based on current energies, let's take a look here, faith and love. All right. Any changes in the love zone? Well, it does look like things kind of go a different way than you thought with the three of ones. It's like a change of direction, but it's you with new information changing direction. And with that five of pentacles, that's about having some old beliefs related to lack. And, you know, maybe earlier in life, especially seven years old and younger, being left behind, feeling abandoned, out in the cold, not feeling worth, feel like you have to overgive to get a little bit back. I shared in, if if you have seen it, the six of pentacles video, that was in the the previous chat. In fact, well, I'm going to post a comment with the order here. So let me grab that. If you if you haven't seen it, just in case, I'm going to throw it. Here it is, six of pentacles. I'll throw this video. I've probably shared it before. You're like, I've watched it five times. What is it? But I'm going to put it next to your name when I post the comment and pin it after I'm done here. And so you can jump into that because that's part of what leads you to changing your route regarding love, which can open up and bring down these force fields to allow love in. Because I feel like right now there's some underneath the surface of conscious out of balance where your inner child's going, no, we don't deserve love yet. You have to give a thousand love coins before you get one coin back. And it's like, that's way out of balance. But our inner child learns that when they're growing up, which that six of pentacles video talks about. Gives you a nice little tool on how you can release that and bring it down to one to one instead of one to a thousand, which drops those and brings in the love. So I like it for you. So there is possibilities, but it's releasing that because that's what's keeping people repelled away from you as your little inner child is going, no, we don't deserve them yet, anyone yet. So I like that for you, faith and love. So many blessings. That's what they have for you right now. And then lastly, but not leastly, we have moonlight. So moonlight, thank you so much for your donations earlier. And your free question is, why is it so hard for you to let go and just let him live and fall like he does? I have to, so you have opportunities to date someone else, but keep looking out for him. Is this the soul tie? You know, right? Why can't I let go? Stubborn, stubborn. We'll take a look here. So is it a soul tie? Whoa, all right. And what else do they want you to know here? Is it a soul tie? Well, two of cups, important relationship in your life. So it has been an important relationship in your life. And there is this soul tie. I mean, literally, look at the little flame in between the heads there. And so there is this drawing together that's there for you here. Let's see what else. They gave you some extra cards here. Hmm, okay. Yeah. Oh, no, this is the two of stars. Sorry, two of hearts is over here. So this is energetic tie. Not heart tie. So there is this energy that has connected you guys. But this also gives you the power to let go and and whatever you focus on grows and expands. And so if you can consciously just start to look at the energy you're choosing. And there, I feel like there's something about. There's some interesting energy. I don't want to feel like responsibility for them. Blame. I just feel like there's a lot of this. I need to be able to complete that. I need to be able to do this. I need, I need, I need. And it's like, hmm. But that's when we focus on need and want and this lower vibration, that's where the energetic tie is. But if you even do a gratitude release kind of ceremony going, I'm grateful for what I've learned from them. And look at, I feel like, okay, they're bringing a lot of clarity and now I'm like, whoa. If you can look at what have I learned, you know, because I was in this relationship with them, my interactions with them, what did I learn about myself through this? Because I feel like once you identify, what is it that I wanted to learn that I wouldn't have learned if I hadn't interacted with them? Then, oh, okay, you know, then I'm ready to release that. But until we grasp, but I feel like that's the energetic tie is you're not done learning yet the lesson. But as soon as you can identify the lesson, then you're released from it. And that's what will happen because it's not destined for you guys to be together. Because you have, you know, the eight of hearts, which is walking away from emotions that don't serve you anymore, relationships that don't serve you anymore, to the two of hearts, a union. So there is a union that is waiting for you. And the seven of stars is about you being true to your authentic self. And this person will be an energetic match for you. And I don't know if it's this person that you have an opportunity to date, but you'll know because unlike, you know, this individual, this to let go of this other individual, I don't know if you mentioned a name, but let this other individual go. You need to, you know, realize that we're not an energetic match, you know. Um, but I'm, I did draw them in when I'm lower vibrational to learn. And that lesson needs to be learned in order to have that connection completed and no longer needed. Then the power bish turns off and then it's just not there anymore. Cause the draw, but as long as we have our lesson to learn and we haven't realized it yet and going, oh, thank you. I understand the lesson that I was to learn. It was this, this is what I was to learn about me, not about them and about everything else. But it's all about a mirror. What did I need to learn about myself, right? And um, and realizing the mirror they are for you here. So it's like um, you know, the judgments you have about how they're living and how they're, they fail and whatever. It's like, oh, how do I feel about myself that way? So look into that, cause that could help release that. So hopefully that helps, right? So that's what they have for you, moonlight. Enjoy the adventure, yay, and go on that date. All right. So many blessings, everybody. I'll be back tomorrow at eleven AM uh, for more readings. And tomorrow was special where I do make sure that anyone that makes a a free reading request or any request during that morning session from eleven AM to one PM mountain time, I will make sure you get a message sometime on Sunday, whether it's um, during the session or when I, after I go spend time with my praying mantis members and eat and come back in. So thank you guys for your patience, all the love, all the support, all the thumbs up. I'm so grateful that we're all in this together. And remember, as we're going through our adventure, every second of every day of our lives, we truly are eternally and unconditionally loved by the cosmic mother, the cosmic father, our creator, and a whole multitude of beings of unconditional love and light. And of course, I love you too. So twice again, much love, hang in there, take care of yourself, stay warm for those of you in the northern hemisphere. It's like almost zero now. So stay warm, uh, stay cool of you, the those of you in the southern hemisphere, you're in summer, so. But much love, we'll see you soon.